Which is the second allocation from the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, or S R two fund. And about twenty-two percent of this is planned for our summer school expanded program, which allows us to have additional teachers and expand the program by a week. The remainder of the money will be used to purchase Chromebook cases, additional Chromebooks, and PPE. We also have been informed about a third allocation, as you mentioned, and we're just awaiting that additional information. So you heard lots of planning, so we have lots of ideas and good ways to spend that money. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Papas, will you come forward with the operational update?
Good evening, School Board, Chairwoman Sheeler, and Superintendent Tillot. For the record, I am not buying a car. But Artie's analogy was great. The truth of the matter is he stopped over my house the day he bought a new car, came over, turned the car over, we looked at the car, it was great, because we were enthusiasts. He got back in the car. He drove eighty feet away from my driveway, and the car stopped. I went, oh my goodness, brand-new car, something is terribly wrong. And I started to walk to him, and he waved, "No problem." I just couldn't figure out where the lights were. So that's what happens with a new program, just like with a new car. Just wanted to set the record straight. So before I get into the modernization slides, I would like to go over a couple of little things. One is with the return to school for four days a week, it has changed the food service numbers. Previously, we had half the A kids were in two days a week, the B kids were in two days a week, and we had the food distribution going on Mondays and Thursdays, which it still is. Once the kids came back to school, there was a huge increase in the amount of meals that we were distributing in schools. And concurrent with that, as one might expect, there was a decrease in the number of meals picked up on Monday evenings from four to six-thirty at the primary school, and on Thursdays from four to six-thirty at the primary school. Just drive in, we're waiting for you. Last week, we sent out a robo-call at four-thirty, just before the meal distribution. The phones rang off the hook, Lena had to stay later than she anticipated, but it was great, because there was a surge in the meals. Because at some point, there's a lot of work that goes into making the meals, and keeping them cold, and being there to prepare. So we appreciate that people are coming and availing themselves. These meals are being paid for by the U.S. government, and we are happy to distribute them to you, and please enjoy them, and it helps us. You may recall, as a board, that a year or so ago, we reviewed the fact that we had roofs on our CIP for two schools. And we also had less than a stellar amount of money to do the remodeling. So with your help and some creative financing, we made those $2 million fungible, and we moved them from the CIP into the middle school project. Concomitant with that was the need and the desire and the opportunity to do solar. And we get two great things, or four, as it were, two roofs and solar on multiple schools, which is a great learning tool for students to look at dashboards that show that, and energy savings, as well as the needed roofs and the money to go to the middle school. Just wanted to let you know where we are with that project. We are putting out the solicited PPEA, personal, public-private, educational thing, and that is going out tomorrow. It'll be out on the streets for forty-five days, at which point, we will then go ahead and we have to post summaries of the companies that respond. We will go through a process that's well-defined in the proposal to select from among the respondents. We will enter negotiations. We'll be coming to you to share all of this with you. We'll be having a public hearing, and then we'll be moving forward. But I just wanted to keep you in the loop of where we were with that project. Currently, with the middle school, we are going through submittals. A submittal, every day, I get something in the email that says, "Is this okay for a mask, or do you need that mask?" And we have all of the specs written out, but then the vendor literally has to prove to us that this item meets what we have. So there's some yeses and nos in that process. We're going through those. And we're also going through change orders, or potential change orders. So this is where we left off. These two pictures show, this is where we cleaved the auditorium from the original building. And then here on the right, there was more demolition of the chorus and auditorium, and that's what I showed you last time. The main portion of the stage area was removed here. And then things that go bump in the night. These are things that we thought might be there, didn't know if they were there, and sure enough, when you're digging on a site that was, had eleven different phases of construction, we bump into things. The front left here is a grease trap that was in the front of the school that nobody knew was there. The item on the far top right, almost looks like the top of a Russian submarine, ended up being this device, which is seven feet tall, if you can get a sense of the scale of that. And that is, we didn't know it was there, it was an old oil well, an oil tank. Sometime between when we stopped shoveling coal and we started using electricity, we had oil, and that thing is filled with concrete. It's so heavy that we're trying to find out where the space shuttle trailer is, so we can use it to haul. Or, at this point, it's been deemed safe and inert, and we're looking at actually just pushing it, digging a hole, putting it down. And here, this is a picture of another unintended bump in the night, which was three layers of floor. We knew there were two, and then there was a third, and all of this ends up costing us more money. But we have a contingency fund, and we have been using it, and hopefully, this bump in the night process is ending. Here's some progress. The first upper picture on the left, there's a chart. It's about twenty feet long, and there's just two panels here, and it's week by week what's happening. And we have meetings with the contractor and the architect and the various engineers, and we go over that. The next picture on the top is just showing you some of how we're going to be moving water, stamp pipes, and all of this has to be planned. We actually had to move them. Again, we had to rethink it, because as we dug, we found where the cable for the city was, and everything, and everything is, everything is a process. And then here on the lower left, that is actually for conduit. So that is where all the new electrical is going, and, you know, the things are happening. Upper left here, there's an individual there with a saw. He's actually sawing through the cement walls, because we had to open walls up based on the plans. That's in the hallway. And these are some more images of different demolition. In fact, the one on the far right, that was from within the school property, looking towards Pecoson Avenue, and that wall that's there that's white with blue, that's the inside of the library. So from Pecoson Avenue, you'd still see the bricks at this juncture, but that's all since gone. And then here, we're bringing in soil, and if you, the far-right picture is seven feet deep. So right where the old auditorium was, we had to dig down, because today, you need soil that reacts a certain way to the weight of a building. Back in 1930, it was more like, "Go ahead, put it right there." We don't do that anymore. So we had to dig down seven feet in some places, twenty-two inches in other places, assess the compactability and the suitability for the soil to stay rigid, if you will, with the weight load that we were going to put on it. Otherwise, you have a building that cracks. So that was there, and then here, you see this person, this woman here, she's using a device that's testing the water moisture in the earth. We have to bring the earth back in, in seven-inch increments, because any more than that, you can't get the compaction you need. They've determined seven inches can be compacted effectively, and then you have to check the moisture level. We were at twenty-two percent, that's too high, so then you have to wait for Mother Nature to dry it out in between rain spells. But that's kind of what's happening there. And then here, the demo was completed, and on the right hand, so now you see on this left-hand picture, finally, it's all backfilled. And to the right, you see the, where the footing is going to go, and it might be hard for you to see, but in the distance, there is a person crouched down, tying the metal rebar together. And that is the southwest wall of the new cafeteria. And then there are some very handsome, excited people doing the shovel-turning ceremony for the building. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Papas, does anybody have any questions?
That was fun.
Moving on to public comment, Ms. Reimers, are there any cards?
No ma'am, we do not.
All right, then, let's move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Helf will lead us through it.
Item A, approval of financial reports. Item B, approval of no action. Item C, authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with a tax request. And item D, approval of March's regular meeting, budget, public hearing, and special meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a move to approve the consent agenda? Second?
Second.
All right.
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeler?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Okay, now we'll move on to other matters for consideration, and first is the consideration of approval of the special education plan for school year 2021 to 2022.
This is something you're used to approving annually. It's to ensure that we comply with all of the regulations associated with running a comprehensive special education program, including how the funds are allotted and spent. And of course, this plan, under the great leadership from Dr. Ryer, is in full compliance, and we're...
Mr. Tillot, do we have a motion to approve the first reading?
So moved.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments? Right, Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeler?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Our second item is the consideration of approval of the Perkins Grant, school year 2021 to 2022.
This as well is an annual approval. Perkins funding is the federal portion of our Career and Technology Program funding. It's about $17,731 for this year, and we are also recommending approval of that grant action.
Thank you. Mr. Tillot, are there any questions about this? All right.
Can we have a motion for it?
Yes, let's have a motion to approve the Perkins Grant. Thank you.
Okay.
Now, I don't, is there any comments?
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeler?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Right, and the third matter of consideration is the approval of the textbook adoption.
And as you also are accustomed, I have textbook adoptions every so often. One of our board members asked how that works, so I'll just give you a quick rundown, just as a refresher. Of course, the, we have a team, typically the teachers in that program, that vet textbooks from, that are provided them to explore, that all meet the criteria that's been vetted already by the Virginia Department of Education, so it meets the curriculum expectations for that particular course. In this case, we're talking about Spanish, which we have from the middle school level up, and also biology. So those two textbooks have been vetted and recommended by our team, and those books are available, so you'd like to look at them, and we recommend you approving that, those two textbooks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tillot. Do we have a motion to approve this first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeler?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
And our fourth matter for consideration is the approval of proclamations for Teacher Appreciation Week.
And Teacher Appreciation Week will be May 3rd through the 7th, and whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors, and teachers continue to influence us long after our school day ends, and we honor the dedicated men and women who lend their passion and skills to educating our children, because we believe teaching is one of the most valuable professions in this country, and each and every teacher in the city of Pecoson is essential to student success, and their efforts result in increased student achievement throughout the city, and greater confidence in the school system. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed on this twentieth day of April in the year of 2021 by the School Board of the City of Pecoson, of Virginia, that the week of May 3rd through the 7th of 2021 be hereby celebrated as Teacher Appreciation Week in all Pecoson City public schools.
And we have another proclamation for the school nutrition employee appreciation. Whereas nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day, and whereas the staff of Pecoson City Public Schools Meals and Nutrition Department are committed to providing healthful, nutritious meals to the school division's children, and whereas the hard-working staff who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children, now therefore, be it proclaimed on the twentieth day of April by the School Board of the City of Pecoson, Virginia, that Friday, May 7th, will be celebrated in all Pecoson City public schools as School Lunch Hero Day. Our next proclamation that will be read by Ms. Helf?
Proclamation for School Nurse Appreciation Day. Whereas children are the future, and by investing in them, we are ensuring the world's prosperity. Whereas school nurses are professional nurses that advance the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievements of all students by providing a critical safety net for our nation's most fragile children. And whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, parents, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health. And whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning, and are positioned to make a positive difference for children every day, therefore, be it proclaimed on this twentieth day of April in the year 2021 by the School Board of the City of Pecoson, of Virginia, that May 12th, 2021, be hereby celebrated as School Nurse Day in all Pecoson City public schools.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to communications and other matters. Ms. Tillot, do you have anything to add?
Nothing further. Thank you.
All right.
Vice Chair Sheeler, we need to have a motion for those approvals of those proclamations, please.
Ah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Helf. You will never let me fail, will you, Lena? Yes, I would like to have a...
Motion, please.
May I?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeler?
Aye.
Motion passes to approve the proclamations.
Excellent. All right, so now we can move on to communications and other matters, and Cassidy Spakes will update us.
Pecoson Primary School has successfully welcomed our hybrid students to school for full days. Our staff worked incredibly hard to rearrange classrooms, procedures, and schedules to accommodate this change. Several teachers changed their instructional delivery models from virtual to in-person, handling this adjustment with the utmost of professional and determination to do their best for our students. We had over seventy students whose classroom teacher changed due to necessary adjustments to bring more children into school each day. These students and families, as well as their new teachers, have accepted this change with grace and positivity. This is a challenge for such young students at any point in the year. We're thankful for the support of so many to make learning in the classroom possible. Pecoson Primary is also recognizing our military families, as April is the month of the military child. Our students and staff are celebrating our family spirit week this week, and our counselor has created special recognition for our families, which will be shared very soon. We are also incredibly proud of our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Sizemore. Mrs. Sizemore has been recognized by her each, for her dedication to our students and school. She takes on each day with love and a smile. Thank you for choosing Pecoson Primary, Mrs. Sizemore. Again, Pecoson Primary School is thankful for the support of our administrators, teachers, and families, as we continue to do our very best for our students. Pecoson Middle School is excited to transition to more in-person day. We are enjoying seeing our hybrid students in person four days a week. We are now in the process of gearing up for SLL testing, and this is fast approaching. SLL testing begins tomorrow and runs through June 2nd, occurring every Wednesday for at least one grade level. We would like to thank everyone for their support and understanding, especially in a year that contains so many transitions. It is exciting to ride down Pecoson Avenue and see the progress taking place with the new renovation. April is National Library Month. Pecoson Middle School Library held a National Library Month book giveaway event for all sixth and seventh graders, seventh-grade students on April 15th. The event was held outside, and students got to choose brand-new books to keep. Thank you to the Project-Based Learning Committee and to the Pecoson Education Foundation funding the activity for students. Another PMS National Library Month activity is Read to Your Beanie Baby. Thanks to a donation from a member of the Pecoson community, every time a student checks out a book in April, the student receives a beanie baby to read with and keep while supplies last. In additional exciting news, the PMS Library won a $1,000 Financial Literacy Grant from Bayboard Credit Union for the grant entitled Book a Trip with Financial Literacy. Funded items include board games and books related to financial literacy, and a subscription to an award-winning financial literacy database for the 2021 through 2022 school year. The final quarter of the school year means that Pecoson High School is charging full speed ahead. Students continue to be engaged in meaningful learning experiences across the curriculum. For example, Studio Art II students explored color mixing with acrylic paints, while students in forensic science investigated handwriting analysis techniques. Band and corps students began performing and rehearsing for their spring showcases, and English XI students engaged in the final preparation for the writing SLL exam. The talents of our Islanders were honored in a plethora of ways this past month, with our two Odyssey of the Mine teams earning top marks at the state champion competition, qualifying for the world competition, as well as Pecoson High School students taking the top three prizes in Friends of the Pecoson Library Essay Contest. Additionally, Pecoson High School Fall Athletic Teams continue to excel in postseason play, with cross-country volleyball, field hockey, and football all qualifying for the state tournament with excellent regional performances. Tomorrow will be the multiple-choice portion of the end-of-course writing SLL exam for all XIth grade students, and we wish students much success on their exams. Going forward, testing will occur each Wednesday, and we encourage families to check our communication channels, including the weekly newsletters, emails, and the school website for all of the testing information, as well as the latest accomplishments of our students and events within our school community. Thank you.
Ms. Spakes, that was great. Freeman?
I'd just like to congratulate the Teachers of the Year, our state chorus band, Odyssey of the Mine people. Like to say congratulations to all of our sports teams. You know, when we gave them sports back, whenever we voted for it, we said, "Go win some championship," while they're listening, and good luck to all our student athletes that are playing today or this weekend. Good luck to all the kids who take an SLL writing test tomorrow. Get a good night's sleep, eat a good breakfast. As always, I'd just like to thank our teachers for all their hard work in our hybrid environment.
Ingram?
I just want to congratulate the Teachers of the Year, and the Teacher of the Year, and the Pecoson High School Senior of the Month, the All-State Chorus and Odyssey of the Mine, and the delegates, you know, for the chorus. I want to thank the Langley Speedway management and owners for, you know, listening to the parents and organizing the graduation for the year. Blow it out of the water compared to previous years. It's a great experience for, you know, the students. They lost a lot of this year, so hopefully, they'll get some, a good memory from that. And just want to thank the teacher staff and faculty for everything they continue to do.
So the proclamation I read tonight was Teacher Appreciation Week, you know, May 3rd through the 7th, and it's really kind of difficult to think that that is a design week, just for all that they've done, you know, for the students this year. Just an exceptional job by our staff, our school board office, all the extra hours that they put in to get through this year, and it certainly doesn't go unnoticed. I do have a couple of updates. Girls volleyball is down two to one heading to the fourth set right now in a barn burner with a very talented little girls field hockey was down one-nothing going into the fourth quarter, and they just tied it up with about three minutes left. So they could be poised for overtime here in the not-so-near-future. So they've had a good run against James Monroe, who's a very talented team. I think they're back to, they're at least back-to-back and maybe three-time state champions. Seems like it's a, probably a heated venue. I'm surprised we don't hear the bells ringing from here when that goal was scored to tie it up. So I wish the girls the best, and good luck to football on Saturday as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Holcomb?
Thank you. I missed last month's meeting, so I wasn't here to do the hurrah for the four-day back in school, but it's just, I'm just very proud of Pecoson. I mean, I've been here about twenty years, so I got about forty more to go before I'm really at Pecoson, I bet. You know, never, right? Wasn't born here, not going to happen, right? So, but just very proud of our, really, our students, of course, who have just, with rare exception, with rare complaint, they've just made this happen. Right down the line, parents, you know, again, rare, I think you've heard all the problems that already we've dealt with much, but rare issues, just made it happen again. Also, you know, of course, the teachers and administrators. We didn't pay time and a half this year, because you would've got wealthy and left us, so we couldn't pay you all for overtime while you administrated. Thanks so much for your patience this year. It seems like it was five years ago that it was March 13th, 2020, just a little over a year ago, but we've hung in there, we've done well. I'm really excited about the plan in the fall, since I guess we're back to normal. Great day, so thanks, my thanks to you all.
Ms. Hessel?
I couldn't agree with what everybody else said more. Thank you, teachers. You know, we're glad to be back in school four days a week, and we appreciate everything that you've done.
Everybody was very eloquent in what they, what they said. I enjoyed Mr. Tillot's, Tillot's quote, "We should never waste a good crisis." And so we're very excited about the positive changes that will come this fall when we, when we go back to, hopefully, as many folks as we can get in our schools. And he also reminded us of the generosity of the city council in sharing CARES funding to allow us to invest in the air quality of our HVAC system, in the gymnasium, and many other things, so thanks very much.
So thanks very much. And now, do we have any other material for board review?
No, we do not.
All right. We stand adjourned.